Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us on a Friday afternoon. This is Pauline Chung from the San Mateo Area Chamber of Commerce. I'm the Director of Communications and Marketing. And I wanted to welcome back Enrico Hernandez from Delatory and Associates Insurance Services. He's held two town hall meetings. This will be his third. So he has been guiding us through all this, the PPP loan and now the forgiveness application. Can you hear me?
Thank you. Are we ready to go?
I'm ready.
Great. Well, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for hanging in there on a Friday afternoon. I realize probably I'm the last thing or the only thing between you and the weekend. So hopefully this will be worthwhile information. Why don't we just go ahead and jump in? To make this an interactive presentation, that's okay. We have, there's not a lot of people here. So I think we can, you can ask your questions if, Pauline, if I could ask you to please monitor the chat room?
Sure, I will do that.
Right, so there, yeah, so we'll go ahead and go ahead and start. Well, thank you, everyone. There's, there's been a lot of things going on with the PPP. And many, if not some of you who received loans back in the March-April 10th, and you're probably well up or past your eight weeks and you're probably deciding, do I do the eight weeks? Do I do the 24? Or I just, or you may have just gotten your loan. What does this all mean? And this is a new vocabulary and I don't understand that, what's going on? And so we, you may be at different, at different time periods in your loan. You also may be, if you're a part of a nonprofit, or if you're part of a C corp, or I mean a C corporation, or if you're an S corporation, or if you're an LLC, or whatever, you know, or you're just a Schedule C filer. Hopefully, we have, we do have information for all of you in this, in this presentation. So without further ado, what's the agenda for today? And I'm going to actually, going to actually show you the loan forgiveness application. And we're going to go through the new loan forgiveness application. There is an EZ form now. I, you know, I guess for those of you who at one time, or maybe now are filing a Form 1040 EZ for your own personal taxes, it's greatly simplified, the loan forgiveness application. I, I think that, yes, the other, the old one is, you know, it's, it's a grind, okay? And unless you really enjoy doing this thing, you know, any, any help will be accepted. And then I'm also going to give, going to give some updates as of the 23rd. We had a, we had a little change in the pattern of information flowing from the SBA. Usually we get things on a Friday. This time we got something on a Monday night and it came out Tuesday. So they've broken their patterns. Hopefully, I think it's, hopefully it will be down to a trickle. The information was coming at us, not at a trickle. And so we're going to be covering these two things, okay? So I just wanted to, just wanted to go ahead and what is this new EZ loan application? This Form 3508Z EZ? It requires less calculations and documentation than the normal loan forgiveness application. So it's a lot simpler. It's a one pager. And I'll show it, I'll show it as part of the presentation at the very end. I'll just highlight some of the, some of the, some of the aspects of it. So you can use this application if you're self-employed and have no employees, okay? So go ahead and avail yourself of this application, okay? So you know, you're, you're, you are probably, and I don't, you know, you're, you're probably a Schedule C filer. I'd be very surprised in this neck of the woods. We have a Schedule F filer, which is for forms, but Schedule C independent contractors, you can use this form, okay? And so you should, you know, I should hear cheering in the background, although many of you are on mute right now. Some of you may be cheering. The other thing too, you could use this, the second point I want to make, you can use this application if you did not reduce your salaries or wages more than 25%. In the previous webinars, I mentioned that you were given, if you're a golfer, you were given a 25% mulligan. You can reduce salaries by 25% and not, and not encounter a one-for-one reduction on the loan forgiveness. Anything in the excess, you would, you would have to make a, have a reduction in the loan forgiven, in the loan forgiveness portion. I'm going to give an example at the very end, so you can see this live, or not live, but you can see this in the presentations to see how it works, all right? Or if you experience reductions in your business activity due to COVID-19 and, and you did not, and you did not reduce your salaries or wages of employees by more than 25%. Typically, those of you who have restaurants or, you know, that type of, that type of business, you know, or other types of businesses, if you're seeing a drop, a severe drop off of your, of your business activity, you know, it's interesting, you know, I just got a call from my gym yesterday. If you want to come back, you know, we're here. So, you know, which is telling, you know, people are still, you know, are, you know, tentative about going back to their normal activities. So if you're experiencing any drop off and you did not cut your, cut, reduce salaries by more than 25%, you can avail yourself of this, of this loan application. I did want to mention that, and Delatory and Associates Insurance, we are offering a service to the community that if you do have a PPP loan, either, or if you're just starting off on one, we're, we're offering basically a service to you. We, to, we'll guide you through the forgiveness process. So I will give you my email address at the very end and you can contact me. We also have access to a portal that'll allow you to manage online your, your PPP. So if you're interested in that, and if you're interested in having, you know, having someone that walk with you on this, on this journey to forgiveness, we're, Delatory and Associates is, is willing and able to help you along this line. And at the very end, I'll give my, I'll give my contact information, okay? Again, the SBA in fixing one thing broke another or didn't provide guidance. So in all, in everything I say, I just want to do, do, you know, do a public service announcement. This stuff may change and it has changed. So just, you know, you know, be patient with me, be patient with us, be patient with yourselves. If you, if you think you understood and all of a sudden they changed the rules, this has been happening. So stay tuned, watch, watch your, your internet services, you know, for news. You had something that, you know, you'll probably find something there. However, just, you know, just wanted to make that little caveat, state that little caveat. All right, the application, and the big application, you know, the media, the meteor application, that was also revised on the 16th. It reflects the 60% payroll goal. I put that there because remember there was a lot of chatter. Oh, am I going to reach the 75%? And what is the 75 payroll cost? What does that mean? I'm having a hard time bringing people back? Or, you know, gee, I didn't, you know, you know, I'm gonna, am I gonna go alone? Well, what the SBA did was they said, okay, now you have to, now you only have to meet a 60% goal of, of the forgivable amount. You have to have, that's, that's your goal for 60%. And there was, when the information first came out, there was a cliff, meaning that it was 60% or nothing. If you didn't reach the 60%, none of the loan was forgivable. They've taken that off. So now, you know, the, you do have to reach, you know, you do reach 60%, you know, try to reach 60% to, you know, to, to get that, to get part of the loan forgivable. Okay, the next thing is, they've done some math for us, because, math for us because of the, because of the extension to 24 weeks. I just maybe, I'll back, I'll give a little background. When the loans first came out, they were an eight-week timeframe. And because a lot of, I guess they thought that all the, all the lockdown or the shelter in place was going to be over within eight weeks. And being in San Mateo County, if you can remember that far back, I remember we were only going to be on lockdown. We went on lockdown in San Mateo County, I believe, on March 17th. And the original date was April 7th, and then it was extended to April 30th, and then it was extended to May 31st. And then finally in June, we started to see some easing. So the, the, the changing nature of the pandemic has led to now you don't have to, you could stick to the eight weeks if you want, but now you can also afford yourself of a 24-week, what we call a covered period, okay? Now, this new, this was a little surprise in the next bullet. When the PPP program was first announced, we were told health insurance costs for owners, for S corporation owners was not includeable, okay? And this is just an example of how things change. And there was a lot of questions, is it or is it not? And we received clarification that it was. Okay, so first it started off as, no, you can't include these in your payroll costs. Then, yes, you can include them in your payroll costs. And now it's, now it's, you know, you cannot include them in your payroll costs, okay? So you'll have to, then, these are not what we call allowable or eligible expenses, okay? The good news is retirement costs for S corporation owners are, okay? They are, they are includeable. So just wanted to point that out. That was, that was kind of a surprise. I remember when I saw that, I said, oh, wow, you know, they've done a couple of 180-degree turns in that area. They also clarified for Schedule C filers. So if you're a Schedule C filer, if you're an independent contractor and you received a loan, this is for you. This is the good news for you. So remember, your application was based on your, was based on your 2019 Schedule C, okay? And so now they've defined how much is forgivable, okay? So of your loan, okay, automatic, you don't have to, you know, that 60% rule doesn't, doesn't count. It doesn't, it doesn't, it does count, doesn't affect you. If you're filing in the eight-week period, you can, you get automatic forgiveness. Owner, they call it the owner compensation replacement calculation, okay? Up to, if you're eight weeks, you can $15,385 right off the bat, okay? So that's forgiven. That's automatically forgiven. And then for, if you decide to go to the 24-week period, it's $20,833. And I put the math there just to show you how they came up with it. It's a little different methodology in the first one than the second one, 8:50 seconds, okay? Eight weeks out of 52, that makes sense, times your net profit. On the second one, they did 2.5, okay, divided by 12. Now, one would have thought they would have used a 24-week, but they didn't. They just, they, they kept it there. So just want to make sure that 2.5 divided by 12 times your 2019 net profit, okay? Not your gross, your net, and up to a maximum forgivable of $20,833. So if you, if you, if you keep your, if you don't, if you don't apply for forgiveness after the eight weeks, then you get a little, you get a little bonus there, okay? Now, a lot of questions were coming up about, hey, you know, what if I, you know, what if I'm done in 11 weeks? What if I'm done in nine weeks? Can I apply or can I, can I change my covered period? No, there, it's either one or the other, eight or 24. So the covered period does not change. However, okay, here is, you can file for forgiveness before the 24-week period is over, okay? So, you know, hypothetically speaking, if you're done in week 11 and you want this loan off your books, you can go ahead and apply for forgiveness. However, okay, be careful of this. If you were skipping down the bullet, if you reduced any wages, you're still on the hook for the full 24 weeks. And I'm going, I'm going to show you a calculation at the very end. The difference between applying after eight weeks and the difference after applying, you know, if you wait the, you know, the 24. So you're still on the hook, you still have a reduction in forgiveness if you, if you apply, if you apply early and you let, and then you reduce salaries more than 25%. The other thing that they did is they, they keep adding to this. If you, if you were shut down restaurants, gyms, whatever, those types of businesses that were not considered essential, and if you were required to close or you couldn't find someone to rehire, or you couldn't find a replacement, okay? All those things will be considered borrower friendly action. So you will not be penalized for doing that. And there is a safe harbor for that. And by the way, say, I'm going to describe safe harbors in the, in the, in the subsequent slides. So that's good news, okay? So before, we did not have the, well, what happens if, you know, if, you know, if the county shut me down? What do I do? You know, you know, here I got, here I have this, all this money. Are you saying basically I have to pay people for not doing work? Well, they, they've, they've extended, you know, you don't lose forgiveness. You don't lose, you don't, you're not penalized for, for not being able to open, okay? And the last point on this one is that, you know, you know, well, how much time do I have? Well, the banks have a certain amount of time to, you know, to communicate with you. But now that we didn't know, you know, at what point in time, up to, up to when could we apply? Or could a borrower apply for forgiveness? Now it's 10 months. And, or within 10 months after the last day of your covered period. You're going to hear me use covered period. Covered period means either eight weeks or 24 weeks, okay? So, yeah, at that point, the loan will no longer be deferred and you're, and you must start making payments. Basically, what's happening there is if you, they don't hear from you after 10 weeks, your bank is going to, is going to say, okay, now this is all loan and this is not forgivable. So put yourself, put a note in the calendar that, you know, you've got until 10 weeks after your covered period. So actually figure out your covered period and then add on 10 months to that. Okay, so just as a, as a reminder, all right? Moving on. Talk, you know, there's a lot of talk and you're going to see a lot of references to reference periods. And see, these are the main ones. If, you know, if you keep these in mind, okay? Reference, what the PPP program does, it compares what actually happened during your covered period or during the time of the pandemic and a base period before the pandemic, okay? And for example, when you applied for the loan, if you can remember three months back or whenever you applied, you, you know, like you used 2019 data or you could use 2020 data for the first three months, you know, months, depending on what kind of, you know, what you were being asked for. In this case, the loan forgiveness application for salaries and wages, okay? The base, the, the base period, okay, is 112020 to 3312020. Okay, keep that date in mind for salaries and wages. However, and that's for salary reductions. However, for FTE reductions, okay? You, you use two, you use two base periods, okay? And you can use one or the other, 2015 of 19, which is February of last year, to 630. Now that was based on the eight week, okay? That was for the eight week. And then from 1120 to 22920. And that's basically if you, you know, to, you know, if you were growing or you were contracting, they didn't want to penalize you. However, there's one set of dates now that we have 24 weeks in the mix that they didn't specifically address. And I looked through all the documents and, and all the subsequent articles. They didn't include 21519 to 123119. So who knows if they're going to add a reference period, you know, I was, you know, I'm just wondering if they're going to do that. But they've seemed to have kept, seem to have kept the previous reference periods. Again, what's the importance of a reference period? You're going to compare what you did to what, to your base period before the pandemic, okay? Safe harbors, okay? Some of you may be, may be familiar with safe harbors. If you have an employee 401K program or any type of retirement program, you know, you've heard that, you may have heard the term safe harbors. What, the PPP does allow us, and it's on the application, and I'll, and I'll point out, I'll point them out to you. There's a, there's a safe harbor. And if you were unable to operate between 21520 and the end of the covered period at the same level as the business activity is before 2152020, and you weren't allowed, your business fell off because of anything from the mandate, not a mandate, I shouldn't say that, and, you know, whatever the CDC put out as the Center for Disease, Diseases, HHS as Health and Human Services, or OSHA, okay? If you shut down because of one of these three recommendations, you can avail yourself, and it's a checkoff item on the application, and you won't be penalized for reducing FTE. Now, the question is, well, what about, you know, I'm following county as San Mateo rules? Well, in, when, I think in some documentations, as long as the county is following CDC recommendations with them, which they are, then this, this will apply to you, okay? So I just wanted to make that clear, all right? And this is added, the safe harbor is in addition to the other ones that we've gotten, that we've received before. And one of the first ones was what happens if an employee refuses to come back to work because they're making more money on unemployment? A lot of us ran into that. Or I couldn't find a qualified employee? Or an employee resigned, or I had to terminate someone for cause? Okay, these, this is in addition to that. So this is, this is, if my mouth is correct, the fifth one in the series, okay? So, and there is a checkbox item on the loan application that you get a mulligan or you get a jet, what I call it, if you play Monopoly, a get out of jail free card. Okay, now there's another safe harbor. And I, and I call, and I specifically am calling this out on this slide. You may want to, you know, just, you know, if you can memorize this. And this is on the application, but I want to highlight it and I'll show you where. Safe harbor number two, if you did an FTE reduction, I say, this is a safe harbor that's afforded to you that once you determine your average FTE between 21520 of this year and 426. Now, remember that 426, we were expected to be off of lockdown by then. It didn't happen, okay? So that's where they're getting these dates from. And then determine FTE in the pay period that includes 215. So those are pretty, my, that was, you know, some people pay bi-weekly, some people pay semi-weekly, some people pay monthly. So this is, that's the first pay period that was all-inclusive. You do a little math here and you compare the FTE of B, if it's greater than A, you can keep on going. If you can't meet that, then you may not use a safe harbor number two. Now, safe harbor, remember, again, there is no FTE reduction in your loan forgiveness, okay? Then you look at, and this is because of the 24 weeks, then you look at, you do another FD calculation as of 1231 or the date your application for forgiveness is submitted, okay? Use the earlier date. And if C is greater than B, you may invoke safe harbor. And again, what's a safe harbor is you're not going to be penalized, okay? So again, it's a get out of jail free card, okay? And you definitely, now this is, you definitely want to keep track of your FTE. There's a couple of ways of doing that. You may have to do a math, a little math. An FTE for the PPP purposes is 40 hours, okay? And there are two methods of calculating part-time FTE. There's a simplified method is everybody is .5, okay? Or you would use actual, okay? And there's, there's a benefit, you know, there's benefits to both, okay? You just have to crunch the math. Again, if you need any assistance on how to figure that out, Delatory and Associates will help you out there, okay? If your C is greater than your FTEB, your safe harbor may be invoked, okay? Don't get too bogged down in this, okay? We can help you with that, all right? If this sounds like, if you're having, if you're, if you're having nightmares and recalling your eighth, ninth or 10th grade algebra, that's okay, all right? Well, you know, you know, we'll, we'll walk with you on this, all right? Continuing on, on the safe harbors, okay? Again, remember, you can read, at first we were told, we told people, don't reduce, don't reduce, okay? And then we, when we started figuring out, you know, the rules and the, the rules of the, of the PPP. Now, remember, if I can, if I may use an analogy, we've been flying the plane at the same time building it, okay? So, and so that's why this is, this, you know, things are, things have changed a lot. Remember, you're, you're a lot of 25% reduction, okay? All right. However, you can, there's a safe harbor, you can, you can restore salaries to avoid it, okay? To avoid a salary reduction. And you have to use the reference period of 215. So you can, you can, you can, there's the safe harbor of bringing people back and you also have the safe harbor of the salary reduction. Okay, so safe harbors are good. Safe harbors are good. All right, so let's do, let's do a comparison here, the salary reduction example number one, okay? I'm going to, I'm going to do, do two examples and I think it'll become, it'll become clear to you the difference between a salary reduction and using them in the eight, the 24-week period. Let's say you have a 24, you decided to go for the 24-covered period and you apply for forgiveness before the end of the 24 weeks. Let's say you had, you reduced a full-time salaries employee $300 from $1,000 in the reference period. Again, reference period, go, but you know, go back to the slide that, you know, that I, that I listed out the reference period. You reduced it 30% to $700 a week, okay? You didn't reduce the FTE, you just reduced the salary, okay? Now, there's two portions to this, all right? The first $250, so that's 25% of the thousand, okay? Other just is exempt, okay, from the loan forgiveness reduction, okay? So that's that, that's one safe harbor, for lack of a better term, all right? The remaining $50 per week, because anything in excess of the $50 is going to, is going to affect your loan forgiveness. It's not exempt. So, so how much am I going to, how am I, how much am I going to go and get hit on this? If I do, if I do, if I exceed a salary reduction beyond 25%, it's $1,200. And how do you calculate that? 50 times 24. And this is a dollar-for-dollar salary reduction and loan forgiveness, okay? So keep that number in mind, all right? Let's see what happens in the second example if I do it after eight weeks, okay? So you're using an eight-week cover period. And there's some, there's some people who, who it may be advantageous to, to, to apply and, you know, to use the eight-week cover period. Let's say same example, same amount of salary, exact same detail. The difference in the detail is the eight weeks. So again, notice in bullet three, $250 reduction, so that's 25% of 1,000, that's exempt, okay? Again, the $50 per week remaining reduction is not exempt. So whereas before, going back to the previous slide, the, the dollar-for-dollar reduction was 1,200, in this case, it's $400. So you can see the difference between the 24 and the eight weeks. Are there any questions so far? Before I go to the actual applications? All right, if your head is about to explode, you and, you're in good company, okay? As a matter of fact, I noticed on the iPhone, there is exploding head emoticon. Too bad I couldn't capture it and put it here on, I was going to put it on the presentation. I think it would have been apropos, all right? I can't see everybody, Pauline. I don't know if you can. I just want to make sure that we give a chance to people, for people to ask questions if they have.
Yeah, Kristen had a question. What determines eight weeks versus 24 weeks?
Okay, good question, very good question. It's the date, there's, there's two choices there, okay? The date you received your loan, all right, begins your normal covered period, okay? That's when your clock starts ticking and it includes that date, okay? Now, it also could, you, it also starts the clock ticking for 24 if you decide to count 24. So originally, and still in effect, is the original date of the loan, okay? The, 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 not the day that you got the, the great news from the bank that your loan was approved. However, this is, you know, this is the date that the money hit your account, okay? Or the, or the date on the check. I don't think any- I don't think anybody got a check. I think it was all electronic, all right? This, then it came, you know, like, well, then there was a lot of, they got, there's a lot of, there were a lot of cash basis accounting questions and accrual basis accounting questions. Well, my, you know, well, I, you know, I, I got my loan on April 8, and my payroll period starts April 10. And, you know, what do I accrue? You know, what do I do? Do I have to allocate anyway? So the SBA said, okay, you have an alternative covered period. You could line it up with your payroll dates, the start of your payroll period. So you didn't, you don't have to do any kind of accrual accounting, okay? And so, and this is on the application, okay? And if you want to avail yourself of our portal, this will help do the calculation for you. Okay, the portal will help you do your calculation for you. So there's, there's assistance. Okay, again, I can't see, I can't see, folks. I just want to do a, do a check-in to make sure that I answer your question. Are there any follow-on questions? Okay, all right. Okay?
Yeah.
No, okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and.
Oh, another one back from Kristen. Do we choose 24 or eight weeks?
Yes, you do, you get a choice. Uh, wait a minute, wait a minute. When, when did you get your loan?
Kristen, if you like.
You don't have to discuss, you don't have to disclose that. You do have a choice if you got your loan. You do have a choice between eight or 24. And however, if you got your loan after June 5, you don't have a choice. You're, you're stuck with the 24 weeks. Okay? Any other question?
Got it on 11th of May.
Okay, then you're, then you have a choice, eight or 24.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're actually going to have to look at your calendar and count eight weeks to see, you know, and see where you are, you know, if you're in target to hit the 60%. Okay, all right. Okay, so what I'm going to do now, and hopefully this will work. I am going to, you should just bear with me for a second. I need to open up the loan forgiveness application and then share the screen. All right, I'm going to now share my current screen. Stop, share, and I'm going to screen share. All right, here we go. Where is that? Is this it? There we go. Looks like it's the one there. Okay, do you see an official-looking form now? Anya, I see you. Can you give me a head nod? You see, you see a paycheck protection program? You see the form? Thank you, okay, just want to make sure. All right, so here we go. So this is the short form, okay? Now, notice this expiration date. They're going to have to extend this form, okay? They didn't give, you know, they're going to have to change this form. So be on the lookout for a new form. Or your banks, or your loan providers probably going to have this online, okay? So I just wanted to let you know that, you know, if you just want to have this, and there's instructions that go with it, okay? And you can get this from the SBA website, www.sba.gov, okay? Or you can also email me, and I can, I can provide it to you, all right? So your loan number now, I'm going to employees at time of loan application. We don't know why they're asking this, and we don't know if they meant FTE, because FTE is full-time equivalent. And headcount or employees is the actual number, because you may have five employees. All of them are not, you know, if they're five employees, but they're not all, they could, they all possibly could not be a full-time equivalent. So it's interesting there. We're probably, the banks are probably going to have to clarify that. If you received an economic injury, a disaster loan, this will be subtracted from your forgiveness, okay? So, and I've gone through, I think it was in the, was it in the last? I don't remember when. But in one, in one of the previous presentations, here's where you choose your payroll. Here's your question about your covered period. Notice here, your payroll cost. Again, you can use this if you're a Schedule C filer, and you didn't do any FTE. Notice it's very straightforward. It's a straight, it's, you know, fill a number here, your payroll cost, and you get this from your payroll records, okay? Now, do remember that your, your forgivable salary amount is maxed out at $100,000. Your, your interest, your mortgage, your rent or lease payments, including your, for example, your copier, your telephone system, whatever you, you know, your rent on your office, your utilities, your gas, so forth. And notice here, they do ask you the 60%, and there you go, done. Very straightforward. If any of you file a Form 90 EZ for if you're a not-for-profit, this is just like that. Okay? Very straightforward. There are instructions, as all government tax forms, there are instructions available. Again, if you have a hard, they're on the SBA website. If you have a difficult time, you can go, ah, here they are. This is, this is the backside of it. You do some, you sign, you initial that you used, you know, the funds as you were supposed to. And here's that, this is, they just added this, this, this part. You did not reduce the number of employees or average paid hours. And there's that reference period that they're using. Here, they refer to a reference period. It's a little different than before. It's on this application, but it's not on any of the others. So that's why there's some clarification to come. Here's that, here's the business activity, and you sign, and you date, and here are the instructions. Okay? All right, now, I'm going to close this one, and I'm going to show you the, the second application. Just bear with me one second. And I hope Zoom cooperates, and it is seeming to cooperate. And share. Anya, I'm looking to you. Do you see a form there? Just give me a head nod, thank you, okay? Anya is my colleague at Delatory. And here is the, here's the application. Again, you can tell you have the correct application. They revised it on June 16. Basically, the same as before. However, notice you got all these other FTE equivalency and wage reduction calculations, okay? And then there's a lot of multiply line sixes by line sevens. And then here's that 60%. Remember, it was 75% previously. And the backside, so you got to, you have to do a lot more calculations. These exceptions are a little bit more complicated here. And then notice you also have a Schedule A, whereas the easy form did not have a Schedule A, okay? And so they have a lot of calculations that you do here, and then you have to transfer it over to your application. But wait, here's that compensation to owner's question, so it's a lot more. Here's the FTE, the safe harbor. So there's a lot more math. And then there's a worksheet. All right, so definitely, if you can use the 3508 EZ form, use it, okay? And here's a lot, they want a lot, they, you, you know, if you're lucky enough to have only eight employees, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, you can, you can do it here. Or if you need to, you can use an Excel spreadsheet. And there is a FTE. And then you have the optional demographic information, and that's the form. Or, so this is pretty much, except for the safe harbors and the 60%, pretty much like the old application where it had 75%.
So Rico, how do you determine if you could use the EZ form?
Okay, let me go back to that, go back to that. I'm going to share my screen again. Right here. And it's on the application, okay? Long, sorry, I forgot to share. All right, here we go. You should see my PowerPoint presentation. This is if you can, you can use the EZ if you're self-employed and have no employees. That's one condition, that's one way you can use it, or one qualification. The other qualification, if you did not reduce salaries or wages of employees by more than 25%. And did reduce, now, this is a question I got to clear, we got to clear up. Number of employees, not FTEs. So that's good, we're going to need a clarification. I'm thinking they just forgot to put the word FTE in, okay? If you didn't reduce FTEs, and/or if you experienced a reduction in your business activity, and you did not reduce salaries or wages of employees by more than 25%, then you can go ahead and use the EZ.
Oh, you have more questions, let's see. What if you had certain people at a certain number of hours? Don't have the same number of hours, but others have more hours? Overall, the FTE will be higher, but it won't be exactly the same employees?
That's fine.
Because that's the nature of the business.
That's fine, you have, what I'm, what I'm hearing there is that you have a lot of turnover, okay? It doesn't have to.
It's based on need, you know, how many caregivers you have going up.
Right, right, yeah, so it's not, you know, it's not, it doesn't have to be the same person. It just has to be the same, except if you can't meet one of the safe harbors, you have to have the same FTE. Any other questions?
They're asking for a copy of the PowerPoint.
Okay, I'll get that to you, Pauline.
Yes. And this is also being recorded and put on YouTube.
Right, right. Any other questions? We'll wait a couple of seconds to let this all settle into you, settle in, and. All right.
Oh, I did my loan with BOFA.
With B of A?
Yeah, and then, oh, would I go to them to work through these detailed questions?
Okay, I don't want to speak, I don't want to speak for the banks, because we're not sure if they're going to give, they're going to be flooded. If you, you could ask them questions. Again, I just want to, we do have a portal available through DLTI, Delatory, and I, Delatory and Associates, Delatory Insurance Associates. We can also help you if you contact us. We can also help you work through these details.
Okay, so if we had nine employees, we used the long form?
It all depends if you, did you reduce FTE? First of all, again, are, if you have nine employees, so you obviously can't use the first one, okay? So then the second and the third safe harbors apply. If you did not reduce, if you, if you stayed within the 25% and you did not reduce FTE, okay? Then you go, can go ahead and use the short form. So again, it's all dependent on the FTE and on the salary, and the salaries and wages. Or if you just, if you experience a drop-off in business, and you did not reduce salaries or wages by more than 25, then you can use the short form.
Question of how much do you charge if they need help?
It's a service from Delatory. Free, did I mention free, free service? It's part of our community effort.
Jim is. On the line, so.
What's that?
Let's see, uh, let's see, what is this? Oh, thank you for that.
Okay, you're very, you're very welcome. Any other questions? Great, okay, so it was a pleasure meeting you all. It's 1:49, and I just want to wish everybody a happy Friday and a great weekend. I'll turn it, I'll turn it over back to Pauline.
Great, thank you. If anybody has any more questions, speak up. It's like the prior town halls, this is recorded, so I will send out to this specific recording, but also I'll send you the link for the Chamber YouTube. So if you want to go back and look at Rico's prior talks, they are available for you. And he will send me the PowerPoint presentation and also have all the contact information on how to get ahold of him to work through the portal, so that they can provide assistance from Delatory and Associates Insurance Services. So we've got some more thank yous.
Glad to be of help. We're all in this together.
Chat, Rico.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you, everybody, today. I hope you can tune in with us next week with the Chamber. We have multiple business essentials. I was able to procure some very, very good speakers. So love for you to sign up on Tuesday. It's about flourishing in these unprecedented times. That's Stephen Campbell. And then on, when we have Rusty Gallard, he's talking about live your best life now. So both are very energetic, dynamic speakers. I hope you sign up for them. And I'm actually doing a session.
I have a call coming through, I'm going to go ahead and sign off.
Yes, thank you, Rico. Yeah, and then I am doing a session on Thursday, these are all at 10:00 AM for Jump Start Your Membership. You don't have to be a new member to join that one. I, I will be doing an online demo of more of the capabilities of our Member Information Center, where you could put your information out there, put some deals out there, update the calendar. There's all types of things that you can actually have, you have access to that I'll show you. So for, for July, we are doing a video parade celebration of all the businesses that have been running throughout, essential businesses, and also those are reopening. In line with that, we're holding an online auction. We have some amazing prizes for the auction. So we will launch that July live fourth at noon time, but we'll start getting some of the information out there for each newsletter. Thank you, everybody, for joining us today. Have a great weekend, take care, bye.